Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. Welcome to the Issues and Answers Forum hosted by the Glenwood Springs Chamber Resort Association. My name is Ron Millhorn. I'm the News Director for Colorado West Broadcasting, KMTS, and I'll be the Moderator tonight. Should be a fairly low-key event compared to some of the last forums we've had. I've been asked to sit up here for some reason. I'm not running for office. I'm not a writing candidate, so, no worries, Mr. Steckler. Tonight, this event is being aired live on Cable Channel 10, and it will replay on Cable Channel 10, March 16th, 17th, at 7:00 AM, noon, 7:00 PM, and midnight. Special thanks to the City of Glenwood Springs for allowing us to broadcast live from City Hall. We will begin the evening with a short overview from Andrew Gorgay, Garfield County Manager, regarding Ballot Question A. Then, we will invite the two candidates running for City Council at Large, Stephen Burgeney and Lyle Beatty, to the stand. They are already seated to my right. Each candidate will deliver a five-minute opening statement. As the moderator, I will then ask the questions that have been received in advance of the City Council candidates. There will be time limits of two minutes assigned for answering questions. The questions will be asked in alphabetical order by last name, and the order will be alternated. Finally, each candidate will deliver a two-minute closing statement. Tonight's timer will be Scott Anderson. He'll hold up a card, reminding tonight's speakers that they have one minute and 30 seconds left to answer a question. He will also let them know when their time is up. We'll begin with Ballot Question A, and Garfield County Manager Andrew Gorgay, you have five minutes.
Ron, thank you, and thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event. I am Andrew Gorgay. I'm the Garfield County Manager, and I appreciate the opportunity to share information about the ballot question. As a predicate, I need to be clear that the Board of County Commissioners of the county and myself as county manager can't take a position on any ballot question or candidate, and I'm speaking for informational purposes only. I'll do my very best to answer every question that you may have. The City Council decided last fall to place this question on the ballot. They're required to place the question on the ballot because the city charter, and I believe the municipal code and/or require a vote of the people anytime a city asset of this type is going to or could change hands. To sort of put that in plain English, City Council can't authorize the sale of the parking lots that we're talking about absent approval first from a vote of the people. So what the ballot question is asking in its simplest form is whether or not the City Council should have the power and the authority to convey parking lots or not. The parking lots that we're talking about are in downtown Glenwood Springs. If you're familiar with the area, we are talking about the area right downtown, just a block or so east of us, between Seventh and Eighth Streets and Colorado Avenue. We're talking about the, what would be the west side of the block. And let me quickly describe what's there now. At the corner of Eighth Street and Colorado is property owned by the county. It's been referred to as the so-called Worrell-Durett Building, named for its prior owners. The county owns that office building. It owns the parking lot immediately behind that. It owns another commercial building currently occupied by a private business. And then, as you travel north from there, there is a city-owned parking lot. And as you travel north from there, right by Seventh Street, there is a pocket park, and behind that or south of that, two lots, one of which is partially owned by the city. So the issue is, should the, should City Council be allowed to divest itself, if you will, of its partial interest in one of those parking lots and its full interest in the other? The planned, I guess it is fair to say that the county has expressed interest in acquiring those lots, because if the county were to be, were to own them, the county would effectively own that entire west half of the block ordered by Seventh and Eighth Streets and Colorado Avenue. The county has a preliminary plan to add 15 to 20 parking spaces this season. That is, that's conditioned on literally, well, there's several conditions there, but if the construction season allows it, we plan to add those spaces. And a lot of that depends on, I'll just leave it at that. The only purpose that I am aware of that the county has ever discussed for that area would be a parking structure. Parking structure, a parking structure that would be owned and operated by the county. In order to do that, again, we need to own all the land under it. In 2009, the county's engineering department, thank you, commissioned conceptual drawings. These drawings are so conceptual, and at this point, so old, that they are of limited relevance, but I do think it's fair to say that it was a two-to-three-story parking structure of up to 200 or 220 spaces. So because so much time has passed, and because there's so many other contingencies, that's about the most relevant information that I can give you, and that's what we're trying to do. In order to get any of that done, we need to own the parcels outright. In order to do that, the people would need to give authority to City Council to make that happen. The question is supported by the Glenwood Chamber, and I thank you for the time tonight to tell you all that.
Thank you. Moving along to our council candidates.
I'm gonna excuse myself, if I may, give full attention to the candidates. Thank you.
We'll go to five-minute opening statements from our council candidates, and we'll begin with Mr. Lyle Beatty.
Thank you. Well, I first of all should probably tell you who I am. I've been around a long time, but I have only been back to Glenwood for about one year. Just to give you background, I was born and raised in Boulder. I'm a native Coloradans. I went through the Boulder Public Schools. Then, I got a, both a bachelor's and a master's degree at the University of Colorado in Mechanical Engineering. I followed that, or included in that time there. Stint with the Navy on the destroyer in the South Pacific. I came to Glenwood in 1953. My brother Hal and I bought the LP Gas and Appliance Company from the Huntley Brothers. Jack was mayor of Glenwood at the time. We operated that business in Glenwood and made this our home. Patsy and I raised our four children here because it was a wonderful, fine community to put them through the public schools here. I have always been interested in giving back to the city where I'm living, if I can, in some way. I think every citizen owes that to the city. Consequently, I proceeded to get interested, and I served as President of the Glenwood Springs Chamber of Commerce for a while. Back then, City Council terms were two years. I served three terms, six years, two of those as mayor. Following that, I did, I joined the Kiwanis Club in 1954. Was President of the Club, participated in their activities, and many other things that I did here included lots of work at First Methodist Church. I served on some various committees in times past for the city, having to do with water. I did develop West Sixth Street over there, where the Hampton Inn and the Holiday Inn Express is now. That wasn't even a street, and we wanted it to be, so we developed that street there, West Sixth Street, along with many other developments I did in this neck of the woods over here. I would imagine maybe some might have concern, because I can't hide my age. I happen to be 89-years-old, and a lot of people are saying, "What in the world are you doing, doing this?" Well, I served in this position before, and having come back to Glenwood, I just thought it was a good opportunity to get back into some kind of service. A group of citizens, including the Chamber of Commerce, invited me to take a crack at running for this at-large seat here, and that's, that's what I'm doing. As far as the age is concerned, I think age is just a number. I will admit that the old body does deteriorate some, but I'm reading a good book called Super Brain, written by Dr. Tanzi and Chopra, and they say in there that the brain continues to regenerate and multiply itself throughout your entire life. I will agree that the circuitry gets a little slow once in a while, but that happens. I got, I was interested in one statement that they made in there, that you have a mind and you have a brain. Now, what's the relationship? Your brain is the engine. It's the power. It's what holds the power to move. The brain is the engineer that tells it where to go. All right, on that bit of introduction, then, I just want to tell you that my history in Glenwood has been a pleasant one. I'm very happy to be back. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve. So, I have many fond memories. One of them is Bob Veldis. You may be familiar with Veldis Park. He and I played basketball together. He worked for me when he was running the A&amp;W, and so I have those memories clear back to then. I'll have to tell you, I tried to play senior Olympic basketball until I was 80-years-old, and I think I may have gone to the well once too often. But anyway, I appreciate the chance to get to speak before you folks tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Burgeney, five minutes.
I would like to thank the Chamber for holding this event. My name is Stephen Burgeney. I am the Sitting Councilman at Large here in Glenwood Springs. I'm a native of Glenwood Springs, born and raised. My family on my mother's side came here in 1870. On my father's side, they came in 1903. My father's family raised herford cattle in this valley from approximately 1903 until 1990. My grandfather, Walter Frost, was county clerk and recorder from 1918 until his death in 1948, as he prepared for his 16th election. So my roots are deep here. I have a great deal of interest in our community, and I value the growing up that I had and that this community afforded me. I've worked hard as your Councilman at Large to be prepared, to do the hard work necessary to make the decisions that are placed before us. I have not shirked that duty, and I believe that it's one of the most important jobs I do. The most important job I do, however, is driving a bunch of children back and forth safely to school every day, which may be the most important job or work I'll ever do. But I take seriously my obligations to this community, and I am very, very privileged to have been able to serve these last four years, and to help in some small way to help this community get through what has been a very trying downtime economically, helping us trim budgets where necessary, helping us make the adjustments necessary so that this community can function in a way that has almost been seamless. There might be a few people who might have noticed a hiccup here and there, but by and large, I think you would have to say that this community weathered the storm that we have gone through rather seamlessly, and that's due to the hard work of a very talented staff and the efforts of your City Council. I'm glad that I've had a part in that. I look forward to an opportunity to serve for another four years. We have set a lot of very important things in motion, and I feel very strongly that I would love to have the opportunity to help shepherd some of those things through. Some of those things that we're looking at are, of course, the replacement of the bridge or the non-replacement of the bridge, an access control plan, the possibility that we have a sterling opportunity that very few communities anywhere will ever have to design and build a gem of a confluence redevelopment, which I think is one of the most exciting things Glenwood has ever had to contemplate. And I look forward to helping to work with everyone in this community, to look at all the options that we can to solve our regional transportation problem. I've been a proponent of a bypass for a long time. How we get that accomplished is not clear to any of us, very, very, very difficult, but I think that you will hear tonight a few ideas that may actually help us get there, and I hope to be a part of that. To all of you at home, I hope that you are able to look in. I'm very happy that all of you who are here were able to make it, and I appreciate your being here. So often at City Council, we play to an empty room. So when we have a full house, we like to take advantage of it. I will tell you right now that it is a luxury that we all enjoy, and when you come, we try to listen to you, and we make that pledge to you every meeting that we have. And it is a very sacred and fast-held pledge on our part. Thank you very much.
First question, we will tackle a big one, and we'll begin with Mr. Burgeney. Answers are limited to two minutes, and this deals with the access control plan. Mr. Burgeney, how would you propose to move forward on the access control plan?
Ron, it's a good question, and in the entire question, the preface was that we have a lot going on, of course, the consideration of the Grand Avenue Bridge replacement, the access control plan itself, the confluence, and ongoing traffic and circulation questions. I believe that I am not so different from my fellow City Councilmen in terms of the fact that we took a look at the access control plan, and the first thing that we decided was that we needed to break that plan into smaller pieces so that we could very closely examine each of those segments in order to attempt to prevent adopting a plan that had unintended consequences for the city. One of the really difficult problems that you have in adopting a plan like the access control plan is that it is a plan for the future, and it is a blueprint. If I had a crystal ball and I could tell you exactly what was going to happen in 20 years, then I would know exactly what the access control plan would look like. But the fact is that it is a document that is able to be modified, and it will never be triggered in any great sense unless it is triggered by a rash of accidents or by the development which increases traffic from that development point by 20% or more, or by a major project. So we're working through that, and I think that I'm looking at going slowly and very carefully, and talking to as many people as possible, and holding some more meetings to try to really make sure it's the plan we need for our community.
Mr. Beatty, two minutes.
Thank you. The first thing is, is that I have had a very short time to try to come up to speed on all of these various events. Your seven Councilmen have had two to four years to work on these things, but I have studied as best I can on all of the background of this, and I am trying to come at it with an open mind on all of these things. I appreciate the, access control plan is having been very well done, and it's very extensive. I'm impressed with the fact that it is laid out as a 20-year plan, even though they're encouraging the adoption of it now. So I question how those two can meld together. I believe that the access control plan can be subsequent to the final alignment and the bridge alignment that we will have. I think that it's very important, first of all, that Eighth Street has to get determined, but beyond that time, given 20 years, I am not sure that we have to approve the access control plan today. I'm also wanting to make sure, as I read, that the Council or the city has an amendment privilege in that, which will be the way that we will be able to amend it if the control plan turns out to need amendment as this 20-year period goes by. Thank you.
Next question, we begin with Mr. Beatty. What is your recommendation to ensure big-picture, long-range planning is done with regard to transportation in Glenwood Springs?
Transportation in Glenwood Springs is a large and significant thing. I presume that we would have to be talking about everything from segways to 18-wheelers, and how to move them around, and how to make happy all of the people that are on each form of transportation. The bicyclists are, boy, they want bicycle paths that are very accessible, and we can understand that. And of course, transportation also has to be very cognizant of the fact that pedestrian traffic is so important to us here. We have a lot of public transportation in Rafta and also Ride Glenwood, Dejre Major Movers. I am impressed with the fact that the Transportation Committee that exists today has done all kinds of studies, many studies in depth, and these are the studies that I, as a Councilman, will immediately want to review, familiarize myself with, and become familiar with what has happened. It's interesting to me that there are people on the Transportation Committee that have diametrically opposed opinions today on where we should go. So I can tell you that it will be an important challenge to me, as your Councilman, to familiarize myself and then take action as I see fit. Thank you.
Mr. Burgeney, two minutes.
I see two things. The first one is what we do within Glenwood's city limits, and the second thing is what we do regionally. Let me speak to the second thing first. It is my opinion that the way to solve what people nominally call the bypass issue is for the City Council in Glenwood Springs to initiate a conversation with the Garfield County Commissioners, the Pittkin County Commissioners, the Eagle County Commissioners, and the City Councils of every municipality in Garfield County and in Pittkin County, to form a working group to begin looking at the issue of the regional transportation bottleneck that is the connection to I-70 through Glenwood. It is my feeling that only together can we solve the issue of how to reroute traffic that is going up Valley anyway, and it gives us the ability to form a group that can lobby successfully for funds to do an EIS and funds perhaps to build it. Secondly, the thing that we can do within the city is to build connectivity. I would be in favor of a bridge across the Roaring Fork River at 14th to connect to Midland or things of that nature, making sure we connect Eighth Street to the existing bridge. Doing those things within the community which will give us the ability to give people more opportunity to go from A to B across our town by different routes. It will help solve a lot of the problem that we now face.
Next, we move on to the Thompson Divide. Explain your position on drilling of the Thompson Divide, the potential impacts to businesses and infrastructures in Glenwood Springs, and the role of municipalities in the discussion of controlling high-impact industries. Mr. Burgeney.
In just two minutes. I will tell you that I am not in favor of drilling the Thompson Divide, and I will be glad to tell you why. The Thompson Divide, at present, is a 225,000-acre area that presently supports a multiple-use economic engine that in today's dollars produces $53 million a year. It's comprised of the sale of over 14,000 hunting licenses, which brings hunters to our area who buy groceries, who stay in our motels, who buy gasoline. It is comprised of cattlemen who graze their cattle in the summer, outdoor enthusiasts who recreate in the summer hiking, fishing, biking, camping, and an equal number of recreationists in the wintertime. It is one of the last inventoried roadless areas in the state, and it is so pristine that truly there are places that ought not be drilled. In addition to that, it is the source of a tremendous amount of the water that is used by municipalities in Carbondale and in Redstone. The watershed is large enough that it affects all of us, because ultimately, if it is degraded, the quality of the water in the Roaring Fork River will also be degraded, and Glenwood at times, in times of need, uses the Roaring Fork River as an augmentation for its municipal drinking supply. So I believe we need to leave that economic engine in place. It's infinitely sustainable, and if we take care of that area, that economic activity will only grow in strength and vigor.
Mr. Beatty, two minutes.
I have read what I can of Senator Bennett's proposal, as I understand it, to remove the Thompson Divide area out of the sources for drilling in this area, and I think that's very important that a state senator is taking that position in behalf of maintaining that pristine area up there as it is now. I have been up there, I went up there just last fall, and refreshed myself on what an unusually marvelous place that is. We seem to have drilling sites all over Colorado, all over the United States, that even today are supplying the natural gas, and as far as I can tell, well into the future. So I stand today hoping that the issue, as it affects Glenwood Springs, may be taken care of by that area being removed. I believe that if it does come to pass, it will have a serious impact upon Glenwood Springs, on the infrastructure, particularly on the roads. It will have some effect on all businesses, but I cannot help from believing, from observing down Valley what little I have, that it is not going to be a growth, an overall negative impact on this area for what it provides. I will have to say to my worthy opponent, Mr. Burgeney, I heard his speech when he appeared at the meeting in Carbondale, and I have to agree with him when his closing remark was, "When is enough enough?"
Question four, begin with Mr. Beatty. If you were elected, how would you reach out and listen to your constituents?
First of all, I have the time. I have the energy. I have the availability, so I don't have anything to interfere with my desire and my ability to listen to any and all constituents. I like to sit down and plabber with you just as much as the next guy, but I really would welcome the opportunity to speak to groups. I have done that before. I grew up in Boulder High School, where I was fortunate enough to be the senior, I was the student body president. And of all the courses I've ever taken in my entire educational life, that was the finest experience, because I had to get up and conduct meetings before 750 students in front of a mic, so I like to speak to groups. I'm scared of small groups like that, but big groups I like. Anyway, I will plan to listen to your concerns, to be available, and give you my attention wherever it might be. I've heard a lot already. I've had contacts through Facebook and email, which I'm getting familiar with. I will respond that way to any emails in my own time. So let me hear from you. Just know that as your Councilman, I will be there for you when you need me. Thank you.
Mr. Burgeney.
Curiously, this is one of the questions that we, as City Council, have recently been kicking around, as you might imagine. Unfortunately, most of us who are on City Council do not have the luxury Unfortunately, most of us who are on city council do not have the luxury of having the entire day free, but I am in a kind of a unique position, because I do have the middle of the day free. And one of the things that has begun to make itself apparent to me, listening to my constituents at the various meetings I go to, is that perhaps it would be a really good thing in going forward in the future, as your councilman, if I were to establish, quote, "office hours." That is, to make it clear and publish to the general population, those hours when I would be available and would be unfettered in terms of being able to meet with the group, or with an individual, or speak with them. I am also able to do that through Facebook or by email. I think it's really important, one of the ideas that I've kicked around and that I've floated with city council, is that in the summer hours, perhaps in order to promote a more friendly downtown, that we ought to put seven benches along Main Street between Eighth and Ninth, and put a plaque on each bench with the name of a certain councilman on that bench. And once a week, during the Tuesday market activity, we, as a council, go and sit and talk to anyone who wants to just have a chat. But there are several ideas that I've come up with, and I'm moving forward to try to increase my ability to be more available to you, and as we go forward, if I'm your choice, I will put those things into motion.
Mr. Burge, what do you believe are the top three issues facing Glenwood Springs over the next two years?
Well, of course, one of those issues is the bridge. Can you say elephant in the room? It is of great concern to all of us on the council, and to all of you in this community. And I see that it is one of those issues we are going to grapple with as we go through this process. Remind yourselves, though, that part of this process also includes the ability to say no. And as we go through this process, we are committed, as a council, I think, I certainly am committed, as a councilman, to making sure that we craft the very best product we can, and that we make sure that it meets our expectations. That's foremost. One of the other issues, of course, that's facing this community, which I count as perhaps the greatest opportunity Glenwood has ever seen, is the opportunity to redevelop the confluence. My idea for that is that it is so important and such a gem, that it really perhaps ought to be looked at with the idea of holding an international design competition to attract the very best minds from all over the world, who would be delighted, I'm sure, to come have an opportunity to master plan such a development. That's a huge issue. It's going to take a lot of work on all of our parts. It's going to take a lot of community involvement in terms of having conversations about what that gem ought to look like. So, I'm really excited about that. One other issue, of course, is the access control plan. We need to make sure, going forward, that we craft the very best plan we can, and that we look at it with the idea of how we can make it work for everyone going forward. It's not an easy issue, it's not an easy one to do, and it won't be done in a little while. So, those are what I see as the three main issues.
Mr. Beatty.
The question was, what are three major objects? Okay, bridge, access control plan, and transportation. But I'm going to count that as just one, because that is the hugest, the biggest one all put together. I want to make it clear that I have not taken a position yet on the bridge alignment. I have attended the meetings, I have read in great detail the December 6th minutes of your city council, in which they took a position with regard to the bridge, but it was a position that required further study before anything became a matter of being locked down. And that is my position today. I have an open mind, I'm going to continue to study on probably the most important thing we've got. I was impressed at a city council meeting recently, when the issue of marijuana came up, and how Glenwood should approach that. Amendment 64 opened up quite an issue in Colorado. And I was pleased that the city council said, "We will put off a decision on this thing for until more information is available." And I believe the state's activity in trying to arrive at a set of plans will be a guideline, because it's an extremely important thing in our tourist-oriented town here, to make sure that we have a handle on something which could be very detrimental, if not handled very properly there. Also, I believe that economic development has to be welcomed in this town, and we constantly got to keep an eye open for opportunities for continued economic development. Those are my three issues.
Mr. Beatty, what do you see as the greatest opportunity in our community over the next two years, and what can you do as a city councillor to make that opportunity become a reality?
Our town has gotten the name of the most fun town. That didn't happen by accident. This town has presented itself to the public, to which it has gotten that reputation, and it doesn't, it is caused by people who have made a lifetime investment in making that happen here. Think of what we have. We've got the pool, and the facilities down there. We have the Glenwood Caverns Adventure Park that the Beckleys have created up on the mountain. Think about rafting. We have rafting here, and we can certainly thank the fact that Shoshone Plant exists up here with that call on the river. When rivers all over the state are down during the summer, we're still rafting here in Glenwood Springs. So, this is important, that we capitalize on all of these things and continue to look for others. We have parks, we have the Bobville over here, we have strawberry days. What we've got to do, as city council, is to find ways to encourage more and more of similar activities to that, and never lose sight of the fact that people view our town for what we're proud of, the most fun town around. We've got to work to keep it that way.
Mr. Burge.
Well, I would echo some of Mr. Beatty's sentiments, in terms of the fact that we do have a unique product. We have the ability to provide visitors with a tremendous mix of opportunities, the pool, rafting, the, no longer is there any need for us to sneak into the Glenwood Caverns? We can go there and really enjoy them the way they should be, which is a great tribute to Mr. Beckley. But there also is another side to this, and that is the fact that there are an equal number, if not a larger number, of things that people can do here for free, and they are only a moment away. And so, I think that one of the things we need to do is to promote the tremendous mix that Glenwood has, and to that effort, we have put in place a tourism promotion board, which is working very hard to make sure that our tourism dollars are wisely spent, and that we get the biggest bang for our buck in the markets that we have targeted. You mentioned the Shoshone Call. That is something that is near and dear to my heart, having been a part of city council in working toward and approving the Colorado River Compact, which has given us the ability to have that 1,250 cubic foot per second flow at the times we need it most to support our internationally acclaimed water park, which is one of the greatest features we have, and which is another one of those amenities that is drawing attention worldwide on Glenwood's behalf. We need to work continually in that effort, and with that in mind, we are also looking at another feature in the river somewhere, and we're working very hard to try to promote the kind of tourist activities here that will draw more people.
Mr. Burge, how can the planning and zoning process be made more efficient, and how can City Hall become more business-friendly?
Ron, that's a very good question, and I will answer it in two ways. I've recently gone through the process at the P&amp;Z on a personal level with a project that I had, and I found it to be very easy to go through, I found it to be very user-friendly, and I found all of the staff to be very, very competent and very willing to help work through the process. On the other side of the coin, we, as a city council, over the last three years, have worked very hard to begin to go through all of the community development rules and regulations, and the planning and zoning rules and regulations, and we have already begun to streamline that process. That is only a work in progress, it is not finished, and I think I can say that I am dedicated to making sure that going forward, we continue to do that work, to make the planning and zoning process even easier than it is now, and to make your experience in dealing with the city as friendly, as user-friendly as possible. I think we're well on our way to that, and I look forward to continuing to do that work in your behalf.
Mr. Beatty.
Well, when I was presented with that question, you know, how can P&amp;Z be made more efficient and City Hall become more business-friendly, my first reaction was, I didn't know they weren't. And so, that is the first thing I had to look into. There apparently are reasons why there are thought to need those improvements. I asked around, and I got some opinions, that going through the P&amp;Z at times was such a terribly laborious process, there were so many hoops to jump through, and it became so difficult that there had been business entities that had actually walked away, because they felt that they would be unwelcome, no matter what they did. Those are things that I have no reason to believe, but when you hear them, you have to at least pay attention to them. The fine-tuning and the minutia that may have happened are things that we, of course, will encourage our city staff to try to improve, because what we want to do is to almost hang out the welcome sign on those agencies, maybe even rename them, and say, "We're your friendly facilitator, come to us with a project," and boy, we'll see that you get it through. So, perhaps we just need to change our approach there. What we need to do is to make the processes work, and make sure that we don't impede them. And to that, as a councilman, I think the city can work with staff, and see if we can take care of those complaints that have happened, see if there's any reality to them, and encourage those things to not happen in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Beatty, Garfield County has been in the news for renaming their planning departments and creating a culture that supports development. Do you think this could happen in Glenwood Springs, and how?
Well, again, I wish I was more up on what the county had done. Apparently, they felt that their planning department needed to have a better and newer name. So, if that's the case, why, fine, new names are always more attractive to people, and that's why they should be there. But what we need to do, if that's the drill, is to find a better name, and then to live up to it. And as I say, if we wanted to find a better name, like facilitators of the department, let's do that, but then let's live up to it and make it work. I did developments in western Colorado back in 1970. I developed an enterprise park over in Silverthorne up there, and that was my first dabbling of my toe in that business. Did the one in Glenwood, did Peachtree Shopping Center in Grand Junction in Clifton. That was a disaster, because Axon pulled a plug on May the 2nd of 1982. So, I've had some experience in those and whatnot to do. I always remember one sign on the wall up in the county clerk's office, I'm sorry, in Silverthorne up there, when you're going in to do planning, where it said, "I know how they do it in Denver, this is Summit County." Well, we want to make Garfield County, and subsequently Glenwood Springs, visitor-friendly and development-friendly. Thank you.
Mr. Burge.
I would say, going back to the previous question, that we, as a city council, have already started that hard work of making this more developer-friendly. We crafted a local preference ordinance, which gives people who want to do work on projects within Glenwood the ability to have a 5% advantage if they, on their bid. It's a start. We also have been working, as I said, to streamline the process that makes it easier for development to happen. One of the issues that we have in Glenwood is that development in Glenwood is just about, Glenwood's just about fully built out, so development in Glenwood is soon going to begin to be an issue of redevelopment. And with that in mind, we have already begun to try to lead the way by redeveloping a portion of the downtown into a new parking structure, by working hard to meld the, or forge the relationship between CMC, the Garfield County Library, and the city, to keep the library downtown, and to, in fact, connect it as a very real resource to CMC for additional teaching space, and that's been a very successful effort. I think we also need to continue to look for other opportunities, but of course, one of the biggest ones is the confluence, and that will engender a huge amount of development within the city, and how we do that is going to be the key to how it makes Glenwood be.
Our final question deals with a topic that you've already touched on, and that's tourism, and we'll begin with Mr. Burge. Again, talking about tourism and the significance to the, as an economic driver in the community, and the benefits that it brings to the community.
As framed, the question is, do you feel that tourism is a significant economic driver in our community? Of course it is. It is the most important economic driver in this community, and that is evidenced by the fact that tourism is really the engine that brought us through the downturn, because development went away almost entirely, and we were left with our very, very vibrant tourist industry, which has carried us through this. It is not a static industry. We're always looking for new ways to make it better. We are very lucky to have some very powerful natural forces at work, hot springs that is unrivaled in the world, caverns that are almost as unrivaled in the world. And we have two wonderful rivers that are now gold medal waters, and that attract anglers from all over the world. So, we have a lot to be thankful for with our economic engine. The tourism, I think, is our future, but it can only be our future if we solve some of these other issues that we've talked about tonight. And I am dedicated, and if you are willing to give me the privilege of serving another four years, I will work diligently to make sure that we do nothing to harm that wonderful tourist economy.
Mr. Beatty.
I got this list of these nine questions that the chamber collected together, and this last one here, I ran it by people that I know, and whose opinion I appreciate, and the response I got back, "Do you feel tourism is a significant economic driver in our community?" They said, "That's absolutely a no-brainer. Everybody knows that." Well, everybody may know that- Well, everybody may know that, but we need to stop and review that that is the case. I looked for some facts to try to back this up, and I had talked with the chamber on that. And one interesting fact that was presented to me is that we have a population in Glenwood Springs of 9,200 people, but we have 2 million tourist visitors in one year. Well, on my handy pocket calculator, I divided one number into the other and found that every last one of us, 9,200 people, have had 217 guests of ours in town this year. Now, if that isn't important, you tell me what is. I am told that Glenwood Springs has eight times the sales tax revenue that the average town of this size across the state has. Who is that? Locals? No. We contribute, obviously, but it is the tourists that come in and do that. They are our driving economy. What are we going to do? We've just got to realize that this is our biggest tourist industry, that the tourist industry is our biggest industry in Glenwood Springs, and we need to find every way we can to continue to support them.
This concludes the questions, and we begin with our closing statements. Mr. Burgeney, two minutes.
Thank you again, all of you, for coming tonight and for all of you at home who are watching, and thanks again to the chamber for holding this event. As I said in the beginning, I am very privileged to have served this last four years as your councilman, and I look forward to the privilege of serving you for another four years. It is very important, I believe, in the situation that Glenwood finds itself with all of the complex issues that we're facing, that we provide continuity in the process that we are involved in. I, by serving a second term, will provide that continuity and the vision necessary to carry Glenwood forward and to help with the very, very serious and important decisions that we face. I look forward to that opportunity, and I thank you all for your support.
Mr. Beatty.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be up here. I would have to, I have to keep reminding myself that every councilman that ever served on the city council of Glenwood Springs had to be in his seat for the first time after he was elected, so he hasn't had the experience of two to four or more years behind him to run on to seek another term. All I'm doing is saying that I will bring to you my longstanding love of Glenwood Springs, my business experience in this town, that I will catch up with the rest of the councilmen, the six that will remain if I am elected, as fast as I can. I will keep an open mind, I will try to pay attention to all of my constituents, and bring to you the opportunity that I can give you to listen, but I have to say that it is a wonderful opportunity to even be nominated. I have had many favorable reports and comments from old friends of mine over these years. I would love to have your vote for the at-large seat at city council, and thank you for the opportunity to do so.
Gentlemen, thank you. Well, that was rather painless, actually pleasant. (applause) I want to thank you all for attending. This event was brought to you by the Glenwood Springs Chamber Resort Association and KMTS. Thanks to Cable Channel 10 for the live broadcast, and a special thank you to the city of Glenwood Springs for allowing us to broadcast live here from City Hall. Thanks to our timer, Scott Anderson, and to you, the interested voter. The April 2 election will be conducted by mail ballot only. There will be no polling places on Election Day. The voter registration deadline has passed, so anyone registered to vote within city limits who did not receive a ballot should contact the city clerk's office, 384-6403. This event will be replayed March 16th and 17th at 7:00 AM, noon, 7:00 PM, and midnight on Cable Channel 10. A video of this form will also be available at glenwoodchamber.com/issues-answers. Thank you for attending. We'll be sure and vote April 2. Have a good evening.